Turn them off, please. A moment of silence for the first. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Chief.
Councilwoman Covey is absent tonight. Councilman Verris here. Councilwoman Demko.
Here.
Councilman Katina.
Here.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Here.
President de Los.
Here.
Mayor Kabistic.
Here.
You have a vote.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take comments. We have a presentation to make, and why do we do that? Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the Girl Scouts here from Troop 51163. And what they did is they revamped and revitalized and beautified Library Hill where the benches are and the War Memorial up there. Some of the things that they did, they scraped and sanded the benches, they painted, and the fences. They painted the fences, they planted flowers, they cleaned the graffiti off the memorial, they gung some mulch and spread some mulch around there. And this is all for their Silver Award. So we have three Girl Scouts who are striving for their Silver Award, which is the second-highest award in Girl Scouting, is that correct? And they needed to complete this project. And one of the caveats to the project is that all the material has to be donated. They can't buy any of the material themselves. So they spent this whole summer, weekends this whole summer, sanding, scraping, using power tools, building, planting. And we all know how hot this summer was, so if you see the area up there, you're going to be amazed. It's absolutely beautiful. It looks like a place that you'd want to sit down and relax now, instead of a place that you just want to walk by or even run by. So we really appreciate all the work that you've done. And I want to announce the three girls that are here, Mr. President. Emma Gardner, would you please stand up? Kristen Croshaw. And Amanda Martin. And from the Borough of Carnegie, we're going to present each of you a certificate of appreciation that will be presented to you on September 10, 2012. The Borough of Carnegie hereby recognizes, and each of your names will be on there, for your outstanding achievement in renovating and beautifying the benches and War Memorial located on Beetwood Avenue, aka Library Hill, in Carnegie. Thank you for all your hard work throughout the summer of 2012, and it's signed by the mayor and Mr. President. So thank you very much. Let me give you your awards and I think we took some photos, but if you want to get a photo with Richard de Los, I think that would be a nice touch.
Sure.
If public works, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Our Public Works Superintendent wanted to tell you girls thank you.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Public Works, thanks.
We'll use you next year, too.
At this time, we'll take comments on listed motions that are on the agenda. So anything that is on the agenda, if you would like to speak to it, this is your opportunity to do so. Thank you very much. Mr. Stefan.
Mr. Stefan. Jeff Stefan, California Avenue. I have a question about the RFP that I mentioned last month. I see that the price has been brought down to be resubmitted to the public once again. I would just like to make a suggestion. Because as in suitability business, you got the property appraised, and if I were you, I don't think anyone's going to make an offer at $355 either, because they know it's $286. So I would offer it at $286. And I think that way you would get more people interested, which would then, you know, have people bidding against each other. I mean, that's just my opinion. Because if someone's doing a big commercial project like that, it's going to happen there, I don't think they're going to get the loan for the project. And if they do, then they will have to come up with the other $100,000, whatever it is, 80, 70, 60, out of their own pocket, which will cut into their profits, which I don't think will happen. So the other thing is that, you know, I talked to an interested party today, not the initial guy I sent over here to get his own information. Someone asked me to come tonight and ask this question. You're asking that a right-of-way be reserved, or an easement for 200 feet from a certain corner to a certain corner. It would probably be a great idea if the Borough got a survey. Because I really don't think if there are two, or three, or four interested parties, that they're all going to get surveys. People want to know what they're paying $300s or $1,000 for. So I think that would really help, and it would add significantly to the value, I think. It would really help someone make their decision, instead of having to shell out their own money. I just think it would get you closer to what you want to get.
Okay.
And I really do, I mean, you know, I think you're going to, I don't think anybody will get it at $355. It's just my opinion, but, you know.
What does a commercial survey cost?
It depends. If you get, I guess we could probably get $100.
Oh, no, it's a wide-open piece. There are no obstructions, you know. I think, I do go over to Tri-State, Haru Patel, he knows, right on Main Street, and ask his guys what they charge, you know. I mean, they're right there. I mean, they know.
I'm guessing residential, well, it's like $350. So commercial might be like $6, $5, $6. But if you get somebody in Carnegie, since they live in Carnegie, they might, you know, give us break claims, so.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion. I mean, what I saw, it's a price.
I think it's a good idea.
Is the notice already posted, Chief? Okay.
We can still do it. I mean, we can still make the survey.
The survey, we can do at any time, but as far as changing the offering, I don't know.
Well, here's the thing. I mean, even if you started at $286, and you didn't get what you wanted, you don't have to sell it. You know what I mean? So I just think it would attract more people. Because, I mean, people are looking at here. I've talked to two others. They look at it, and they go, oh, they're going to want $350. And they go, wait a minute, the appraised is $286. I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that happens a lot, you know. You know what I mean? I mean, it's always listed for more than it's appraised for. I wouldn't list it at $286.
If you had an appraisal of an appraisal.
I'm saying, that was our appraisal.
An appraisal. If you had a property. Now, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me back up. I'm talking about assessment values. I'm not talking about.
Assessment's got nothing to do with anything.
That's what I was trying to say.
How about this? I never represent a buyer of a property without this contingency. The property must appraised at or above sale price. Now, how is that going to work? I don't know anyone that makes an offer without that contingency. So, I mean, just my opinion, that's all I want to say. I'm not going in because I'm representing anyone that I'm going to make money from, because I don't represent anyone having to do with anything. Someone asked me, because they know I live there. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I'm bored.
Any other comments on motions that are listed in the agenda? Then we will proceed. Councilman Katina, Administration Finance.
Motion to approve the minutes from the council meeting on August 13, 2012.
Second.
Comments? I've been doing comments. Roll call, but please.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President de Los.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the September bill list and addendum.
Second.
Discussion, comments? Roll call, but please.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
President de Los.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to direct the Borough manager to execute the election to participate and the release by participating counterparties relative to the Borough of Carnegie's share of a $54.5 million settlement with Wachovia, now Wells Fargo, to recover overcharges to government entities and consumers as the result of an anti-competitive conduct suit. This action is recommended by the Office of the Pennsylvania State Attorney General.
Second. Can we get a brief description, Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, Mr. President. There was a, there were two actual litigations filed against Wachovia Bank for illegal profiting of a biodeal overcharge of government entities for the sale of municipal derivatives, which are essentially investments made that the Borough would have bought with money that the Borough had, that was not using like the bonds, and the bond issues and stuff to derive profit from, I mean, derive interest from. There were two settlements. One was done as a result of class action. Everyone was done as a result of the Attorney General litigation. We can either go into one or the other, and assessing both of them, it seems that there was more than grief for the Borough to go into the Attorney General settlement as opposed to class action.
And the Borough will receive, what is the settlement amount?
It's about $6,500.
$6,500. Any other questions? So there's a motion to accept this settlement. Chief, roll call, please.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President de Los.
Yes.
Motion to ratify the decision to transfer the workers' compensation insurance for the Carnegie Volunteer Fire Department's and the State Workers' Insurance Fund at a cost of $17,884.
Second. Discussion, comments?
Just so you know, this is, the reason for this is there was a Supreme Court ruling that found that essentially if a firefighter gets cancer, regardless of where, what type of cancer, anything like that, it's going to be presumed to be from smoke inhalation in the course of fire, well, not smoke inhalation, but the impetus that this would have been for fighting fires, that caused a lot of insurance carriers to get cold feet about insurance, volunteer fire companies, select of the borough's workers' compensation carrier decided not to do this, so we had no alternative but to go too swift to insure the fire department.
Does this represent a significant increase in cost for workers' compensation?
Yes.
Any questions, comments? Chief, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
President de Los.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to accept the 2013 Minimal Municipal Obligation Report for the Borough of Carnegie Police Pension Fund and Borough of Carnegie Non-Uniform Pension Fund, as submitted by the Borough Manager.
Second. Comments? Roll call, Chief.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President de Los.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2012-15, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie appointing Jordan Tax Service as the Borough's collector for per-capita taxes, delinquent earned income taxes, occupation taxes, and local services tax.
Second. Comments? Mr. Solicitor?
The reason for this is, Cintax have been collecting all these taxes, and Cintax is essentially going out of business. In fact, there was an article in the newspaper about Green Tree Borough not being able to get in touch with them, which was the impetus for us to conduct an investigation, and tried to contact them, we were unable to contact them. So the recommendation is to, because of the uncertainty of where Cintax is, to revoke the authority of Cintax to collect taxes and appoint Jordan, the collector of these taxes.
Thank you. Any comments? Anyone else? Chief, roll call, please.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
President de Los.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a confidentiality agreement between the Borough of Carnegie and Peak Consulting to perform accounting bookkeeping services for the Carnegie Volunteer Fire Department.
Second. Comments, anyone?
Yes, Mr. President. For some time, we've needed this position to be filled. Our fire department does absolutely fantastic job fighting fires and serving the community, but they're not expert bookkeepers. This particular individual came vise to us. Mr. Verris put in many long hours and finding good applicants. I believe that this particular individual meet every criteria and need, fire department's in agreement, and we met with them a couple of weeks back, they're in agreement with hiring this person, and I think that, you know, it was all positive for us, all, the fire department and the Borough.
And this motion is to approve the confidentiality agreement between the Borough and Peak Consulting, but this person, this company, which is a small company of several people, they would actually be working for the fire department?
Well, they'll be doing all the bookkeeping in those facilities, but the Borough will be paying for those services.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd just like to make a comment. The bookkeeper will also be getting information on the pass-through money that is given to the fire department every year through the county and the state, and also the monies that the Borough gives them. So she will be giving us a report every month on both sides of the point, rather than just what we give to the fire department.
Thank you. So the idea here is that this would be the fire department's bookkeeper, and therefore all of their monies would be accounted for.
Anything from donations through fundraising, anything that is taken in or spent, we will have an accurate report every month now.
Excellent. So there's a motion to approve this confidentiality agreement. Chief, roll call, please.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President de Los.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion A on your list has been deleted this evening. It's not ready for voting tonight. So we'll continue with the code enforcement. Motion, Councilwoman Covey is home. She is recovering from some medical things, and she is in good spirits and looking forward to returning next month. And so I'm reading her motions this evening. Councilwoman Demko.
Motion A, motion to approve a curb cut application for One Water Street.
Second.
Comments? Could somebody describe this curb cut?
Yeah, what this particular individual's looking for is actually not just one curb cut, but I guess he's looking for five individuals, but I believe the end result would be just one big driveway. And one of my deep concerns is, is that these vehicles would be backing out onto the main artery, which is Crowthers Avenue coming into Third Street into Carnegie, and I think that it could create a very dangerous situation for traffic coming down those backing out onto that street.
Our code enforcement officer isn't here, but do we have a recommendation from code enforcement chief?
I believe that the work session in the code enforcement office recommended not to issue it.
Any other comments from anyone? This piece of property is right next to the bridge on Third Street. It is on the Carnegie side of the bridge, right next to what used to be known as the Fucci apartment buildings. This would be the property that is between the crick and Fucci Apartments. If there's no further comments, then all in favor, all in favor of approving the curb cut, say aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion's not carried.
Mr. President, I'd recommend a roll call vote on this.
Yes. Okay. Chief?
Councilman Verris.
No.
Councilwoman Demko.
No.
Councilman Katina.
No.
Councilman Sarsfield.
No.
President de Los.
No.
Motion does not pass.
Public Works motions, Councilman Demko.
Motion to approve payment number three to McElroy Paving Company in the amount of $85,018.66 for work completed for the Carnegie Park Phase One project.
Second. Comments? Roll call, but please.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
President de Los.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve payment number one to Soul Light Construction Inc. in the amount of $87,400 for work completed for the 2012 Sanitary Sewer Repair Contract C, Special Repairs Contract as required by the consent order.
Second. Comments? Roll call, Chief.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
President de Los.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public Safety, motions, Councilman Sarsfield, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion this evening, Motion A. It's a motion to advertise Borough Ordinance Number 2377, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, amended Chapter Three, Part Three, and Chapter Sixteen of the Borough Code of Ordinances relating to the walking of dogs in Carnegie Park.
Second. Comments? Can you describe it and create some of these changes?
Well, this is in relationship to us putting in the dog park. There would be that one area of the park that will be designated to walk your dog.
Mr. President, if I may, what we were tasked to do was to establish a rule for the dog park, and this ordinance does that. Also, you know, there was a conflict in ordinance that, you know, you weren't allowed to have dogs in the park, which would have made a problem with getting dogs to the dog park, so we had to change that part of the ordinance to allow dogs in the park to begin with. But, you know, we did that with, you know, if they're on leashes and they're probably vaccinated and they're going directly to and from the dog park.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Verris, Community Development, please.
Yes, so my correction, Motion A is not going to be read this evening.
That is correct. Motion 5A is struck from the agenda.
Motion B, to direct the Borough Manager to re-advertise the sale of Borough property located at Mansfield Boulevard and Broadway Street, Lot and Block Number 103-M-226, with a minimum asking price of $359,000.
Second. Comments? This is the piece of property that Mr. Stefan was referring to earlier in his comments that the Borough is advertising for sale. If there's no comments, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion C, to appoint Bridgette Van Dorn to the Shetree Commission with a term expiration June 30, 2014.
Second.
Comment? Bridgette will be filling a position that has been recently vacated. For those that don't know, Ken McFarlane, who was a business owner in East Main Valley, he passed away. Yes.
Just last week?
No. But Ken was a business owner and was also a resident, so that's why Bridgette's able to take that position. We still have the three business owners and three residents required. And the future plans at the Shetree Commission, when we do get trees in, and we plant one down there, that we will be planting it in his memory.
I'd like to make one comment to Councilman Sarsfield, inviting me to a couple of the Shetree Commission meetings, and I just want to say, the people are very dedicated, they're well-organized, and they're working very hard to make this town, the beautification of this town, very nice. And if you do walk down the streets with the planters, or just general clean-up around the stores or whatever, it's fantastic. It's what we needed, and Mr. Sarsfield, Councilman Sarsfield is doing a good job of being a liaison with the group. So I just want to say that you're doing a good job.
Thank you, boy. I really appreciate it. All right, so we have a motion to appoint Bridgette Van Dorn to the Shetree Commission. If there's no further comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The President, I'd recommend roll call on that as well.
Okay. Chief?
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Katina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield.
Yes.
President de Los.
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, the committee reports. Administration Finance, please, Councilman Katina.
No report tonight, Mr. President. I didn't get a chance to look over the bank statements that were submitted on Friday.
We do have budget season upon us, though.
Budget season is upon us yet again, and budget meetings, our first budget meeting is next Monday here at the Borough Building at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Code enforcement. Chief, do you know if there's anything?
Nothing to report on the code enforcement side.
Public Works, Councilman Demko.
Nothing to report.
Public Safety, Councilman Sarsfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to start by, I wanted to commend the Carnegie Police and all the other departments that participated in the DUI checkpoint that was conducted on August 31st. I was able to briefly observe the workings and feel that our officers, as well as the others involved, were very professional and did an excellent job. I wanted to also commend our fire department and the departments providing support to them in putting out the fire on West Main Street. Due to their quick response, the fire was able to be kept under control. Also, I want to thank the police and firefighters here in Carnegie and across the United States of America, and our medics for the job that they do. Tomorrow will mark the 11th year anniversary of the September 11 attacks, and let us never ever forget what these men and women do for us. never, ever forget what these men and women do for us each and every day. Finally, I want to mention the recent chemical leak from a truck in Collier Township just outside of Carnegie. The chemical was being butane. I've been pressing for truck inspections for nine months. When the cog was unable to come up with the funding, Sergeant Kennedy, which I must commend, was able to coordinate efforts with Pennsylvania State Police, and I want to thank him deeply for this. He was actually prepared to start these inspections this past July, but the mayor felt that it was necessary not to do it in July and put it on hold. That's why I was shocked at the mayor's comments in the paper, that he was surprised at how many trucks were coming through Carnegie. You know, I sit there nightly and watch anywhere from thirty to fifty-five trucks, from five fifteen to sometimes eight forty-five at night, and all these trucks are traveling up through Green Tree. I think that doing the truck inspections will alleviate the amount of flow of trucks that come through here. These trucks can very well be off of Green Tree, come down Neat's Hill, and be at the same location without having to travel through our roads. And, you know, again, I want to thank Sergeant Kennedy and his efforts, and hopefully the truck inspections will begin this month. I imagine that the mayor and his report will comment on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Verres, Community Development?
I have a few things here tonight. On an ongoing basis, we do have quite a few different companies looking at different rentals or purchases in Part A. I think that that has picked up quite a bit in the last two years. As we talked about, the one lot that I read the motion on before, that's a major fast food chain that's interested in that, and we hope that that will come through. And Dunkin' Donuts is still working on their final plans. With the school district, there was a mailer that came out yesterday or today from Nicodoc showing the, that the one billion dollars that was cut in the state budget by Governor Corbett relates to Carlington School District of two hundred seventy-three dollars per student. So, I was on the school board for four years, and it used to cost us around a thousand dollars per student to educate that student on a yearly basis. Now, approximately one quarter of that is going to be taken away. Obviously, every year, the cost to educate a student goes up, but right now, we're looking at two hundred seventy-three dollars less per student, which is pretty bad. And that's actually all I have for this one.
Thank you, Councilman. A couple of other items to mention. Our tax collector Peg Bowman is going to be taking a short leave, and the tax office will be closed from September the seventeenth for two weeks. If you have to make a payment during that time, Borough Secretary Steve Buter will take your payments and give you a receipt for that, and then you will hold them until Ms. Bowman comes back. She's taking a brief medical leave. Also, want to mention that one of our really big cheerleaders here in Carnegie, Lee White, is leaving to take another position. Lee has been the director of the Community Development Corporation here in Carnegie, an organization which supports local businesses and attracts them, and has done an incredible job. A lot of the businesses that you see which have had their storefronts improved or done renovations, they're the result of, of work from the CDC and Lee White specifically. She's been very active in attracting businesses and improving them. In addition, she was the chair of the festival for a number of years, really tireless worker for Carnegie, so she's going to be really missed here. At this time, there's no replacement identified, and this was a fairly short notice announcement. So, we're just hopeful that someone could be attracted with her caliber, because she really was quite an asset to the community. We will be, the borough will be writing a letter of appreciation and commendation to her, and we will be inviting her back for that presentation. Last month, we had a lot of residents here who were very upset about the status of their, their lawns that were torn up by the Alka-San screen removal project, and there's been a lot of activity going on over the last month regarding that. There's actually two different issues regarding the Alka-San project. One of them is the homes on Franklin that had their lawns torn up, and the other issue is the sewers under Washington Avenue near Lincoln and Trimble, which have been backing up since that project was done. And several churches and local residents have been affected by sewer backups. So, we are addressing both of those issues and actually have been trying to address them since May. And this week, the solicitor and I hopefully will be meeting with Alka-San and their attorneys to address the Trimble Street part of the project, and our engineers, our borough engineers and our solicitor have been working urgently on the Franklin Avenue part, and hopefully those lawn restorations will be acceptable to those residents. Hopefully, we can do, do the repairs necessary to fix their homes and to bring their lawns back to the original or better condition than what they were. As the Councilman Verres mentioned, Dunkin' Donuts, which we've been hearing about for many months now, is supposed to be submitting drawings to our Planning Commission this month, so hopefully that is, is moving forward. And that is all that I have on my report tonight. There's no one here from the Fire Department. Councilman Sarsfield, do you have something from the Fire Department?
Yes. For the month of August, the Quebec Volunteer Fire Department responded to thirty-three fires and two hundred and eight AM打死 calls.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month, we had criminal arrests and citations of forty, traffic citations of sixty-seven, parking tickets of a hundred and forty-two, and complaints in self-initiated activity by our department, number one thousand and eight. Just an update on some things in our community that have happened recently that our police have had to respond to. A few weeks ago, there was another purse snatching in the Irishtown area. Fortunately, within two hours of the incident, our department had a suspect in custody. The suspect was one in connection with another incident in North Fayette, so we were able to help out North Fayette also. This is the second purse snatching, as I said. Both purse snatching incidents were in Irishtown and were related, were interrelated. And in both cases, our officers did an outstanding job of identifying the suspects within hours and make, and actually making arrests. So, it was a great job. As Councilman Sarsfield mentioned before, we did host a DUI checkpoint. One of the highlights of the checkpoint is that we did make a drug arrest in which sixty grams of marijuana and almost seven thousand dollars in cash were confiscated. I want to thank all the officers that were involved, and especially the officers who led the arrest from Crescent Township in North Fayette, so we appreciate all the departments coming together for this event. Thank you. Want to thank the Fire Department, not just for the fire that happened on West Main Street, but also for their help in securing and monitoring two hazardous situations in the community. They did respond to a tree resting on live wires, in which they did an excellent job of securing the area and directing traffic. And of course, the tanker truck leaking, which was isobutane in Collier. And speaking of the tanker trunks, this is extremely interesting. Unfortunately, the information that we received is not accurate. I was the one who has been asking for the truck inspections for a while. It was my idea to even start the truck inspections. I was the one that even noticed that the trucks were coming through, through our community quite frequently. Sergeant Kennedy, this was at our, this was at our police meeting, our sergeant's meeting, in which Sergeant Kennedy, after, when I asked how we can address this, then he offered at this time, because we have a yearly sergeant's meeting, he offered that he could have truck inspections done by the state police, but it would only be once or twice. It's not like we could do them continuously. This, the truck that came through was identified leaking isobutane, but it was in Collier. We had, the Fire Department did an excellent job of evacuating it. I have asked the chief to find the total cost of what it costs our department, the Fire Department, and the EMS to secure the area for the day, and we are going to bill the trucking company for those costs and return the money to, to each entity. This is how it's working. We have a lot of trucks coming through our town. Some of the trucks are delivering fracking water and sand, while others are transporting flammables, such as isobutane and butane and propane. Now, those flammables are impurities that are extracted from natural gas. When they extract the natural gas from the, from the earth, there's impurities in them. They separate those impurities, they segregate them, and then they ship them off to different industries. They ship them off to the chemical industry, to the heating industry, believe it or not, even the pharmaceutical industry uses some of these chemicals. So, we have had a tremendous increase, and we are currently monitoring these trucks as I, as I speak. I've also been engaged with Senator Fontana in addressing this issue as a whole, not just in our community, but in a, at a multi-community level, because it's, the issue is not just germane to Carnegie. So, once we get the costs of it, well, I have the cost for the police. I had asked the chief to give me the cost for the Fire Department. Once we get those costs, we will definitely go and search for the, the, well, we won our transportation company, search for the owners and bill them for this, for the time that we spent on this. I will say this, that in the summer, we were strapped. Our police department was strapped with a number of issues. Give you an example, our detective, who is supposed to be a detective, was off the street, was actually not doing any detective work at all for the majority of the summer. Most of the work he was doing was just regular police work because of vacations, because we had a new officer who wasn't trained, who wasn't even released yet, so we had to make sure that we had to cover our community the best that we can. And he only worked thirteen out of fifty-eight days in investigations throughout the whole summer, thirteen out of fifty-eight days. The rest of the days, he was in uniform, doing regular police work, because we were covering for people on vacations and covering for an officer in training. Last month, in August, we had not one bike patrol, not one, because we were strapped once again. We were strapped to the hilt. We call officers back, you know, some officers have to give us time off, they have time off scheduled, and we have to call back in on their time off, which messes up their weekends. So, these officers are put in a lot of hours. Now, we have Officer Clark up and trained. He was just released last week from training. That gives us the full contingent of officers. So, hopefully, which, when we do these truck inspections, as we will, that we, we will not leave any of our areas uncovered. As you can see, there's been purse snatches in Irishtown. You take a walk up on Beechwood and Library, there's a host of issues up there, not to mention all the other areas in our community. So, there are priorities, and sometimes those priorities have to be met. Unfortunately, some people are, have political motives and agendas, and that's their priorities. And that's what's unfortunate about being in this position. We have also this summer had a tremendous amount of bike thefts. There have been, to date, over fifteen, I think fifteen or sixteen, as of last count, bikes stolen from individuals' properties in this community. I just alert you because I brought this up last week. Without a doubt, it's probably more than just children stealing bikes. I'd have to think that there's a motive for the, for, a motive behind this. Probably, my guess would be it's probably to hawk the metal to get money for drugs. Currently, we will be having another flag service. We'll be honoring veteran John Joseph Zelinski Jr. at Carnegie Borough Building. He was a World War I veteran, which is kind of neat. The BFW Post Three Thirty-One will leave the service at ten A.M. on Saturday, September twenty-second, at the Borough Building. Please feel free to join us. The last service was, was very, was done very well, and I think it's only going to get better. So, I thank the BFW once again for their hard work. Last month, I informed you of Carlington receiving the Twenty, the Twenty-First Century Grant. This grant is a, is a substantial grant for after-school programming. We met with the Boys and Girls Club last week regarding the grant, and it actually complements what they do, because we concentrate mostly on seventh and eighth graders, where they concentrate mostly on the younger children. And one of the components of the grant is a mentoring component, and I'm making this solicitation right now for anyone in this community or outside this community who's interested in mentoring. It's a small time commitment. It's about one to two hours a week in the time slot of four thirty to five thirty in the afternoon, and we would like you to come in and mentor on career awareness, academic support, and even social support. So, if anyone feels that they could do this right now, we'd like you to start as a group mentor, but we would definitely move into individual mentoring if we get enough there. I know that there's some people here from Pastor Davis's church. Would you please pass that on to Pastor Davis, that we are looking for mentors, because I know there's probably some quality people that would love to step up and, and help us out. I also want to thank the Carnegie Boys and Girls Club for providing seven thousand five hundred dollars in scholarships for summer camp programming last year. That's right, seven thousand five hundred dollars. They, Carnegie Boys and Girls Club receives no funding from the borough, no taxpayer dollars. They raise their funds themselves, and they actually graciously provided scholarships to a number of at-risk kids for the summer. So, those, there, I think there were eighteen total scholarships they gave out for the whole summer, at least two a week for the nine weeks. So, it turned out, the total cost was seven thousand five hundred dollars, so I thank them very much. St. Peter's and Paul, Ukrainian Orthodox Church, will be holding the Ukrainian Food Festival on September fourteenth and fifteenth, from eleven thirty to seven P.M. each day. And if you actually don't know which church that is, the Golden Domes. And if you look down on Mansfield Street, two-twenty Mansfield Street, you see the church with the golden domes, that's the Ukrainian, that's the Ukrainian Orthodox Church. And the, we will be having our first skate park fundraising meeting this Wednesday at seven thirty. There's, there's not a lot of people in the audience here, but so probably we'll hit the TV waves and time. But if anyone in the audience is interested, please stop by, and anyone, any Councilwoman member also.
Yes.
At the Borough Building. And lastly, Off the Wall Theater will be having an open house, and that is on nine twenty-two, and that's at twelve noon. That's the new theater that's opened up on West Main, on West Main Street, right near the Historical Society. So, I think that's, that's a boon for our town. I think that's going to draw a lot of people into our town, and I think it's very exciting that they're up and ready to go this quickly. Their first production will be in October, by the way. And, Mr. President, that's all I have for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, if anybody would like to speak on any subject that you're interested in, this is your opportunity to do so. If you'd like to speak, come up, please. Say your name, say your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind.
My name's Bill Gardner, over on Logan Street. I'm concerned about the trucks. I'm glad to hear some scuttlebutt about it here. I called Councilman Sarsfield probably six weeks ago with my concern from Jefferson Avenue, I believe it is here, eight tankers in a row, and I noticed the platters are flammable. Then I noticed on the back of the tanker, it says the gas is non-motorized. So, if there's a leak, how would you know? So, if there's a leak, how would you know?
It is hard to know. And that's why I'm engaged, Senator Fontana, in this endeavor. Because even if we, in order for us, we couldn't even have an officer on staff that could do this every day, to monitor these trucks coming through every day. Even if we could monitor, it would be one day every few months. We could easily have an issue and not identify it. So, it's a big concern. The other thing is, we're the only real residential area that they come through. And I noticed this, like I said, a while ago. We're the only real residential area. They come through here, they hit a little bit of Scott Township, they hit a little, they go up to Nobles Time Road, there's some residential area there. But they come through our business district, so yes. We are currently monitoring this with our police department to monitor speed, monitor everything. I don't want to give everything away what we're doing, but we are definitely doing a number of different issues to monitor the trucks coming through here, especially speed and all that. It is a state road, though, by the way. Just so you know, it is a state road. You can't stop trucks from a state road.
One of the ways we originally were going to pursue it was through COG, is they have a police training program. They were looking at getting additional funding from the state reps and also from Congressman Murphy. And then they would work as partnerships, similar to DUI checkpoints. That date never came to fruition. And again, you know, I got to credit Sergeant Kennedy because he was able to go out on his own, seek out the support of the state police.
I think it's a credit to our department, Sergeant Kennedy, there is some concern.
I live, my back, back of my house faces Main Street, a couple hundred feet away from Main Street. The worries I have are catastrophe. Luckily, it happened outside of our borough lines, but it could have been a serious issue, especially where we have several trucks. If it's a state road, can't we get support from the state police until we get our operation in position enough to make it a pain for these truckers, enough to irritate them, enough to stay on the highway, go around, come down Fleet Street?
We don't have an operation. The only, that's what Sergeant Kennedy is going to use, the state police.
Oh, okay.
See, in order to have, we had our sergeant's meeting, and all the sergeants were very clear that in order to have a trained officer to do this on a daily basis, there needs to be a certain amount of inspections that are done. And it just is impossible for a small department like this to keep it up. That was what the sergeant said. So, there's no way to keep a license up with this.
Mr. Mayor, how does Hybelburg, do you have any idea how Hybelburg does it? Because Hybelburg conducts them all the time.
Lee still does, too. They're a very small department.
And also Collier Township.
Well, this is what I was talking to Sergeant, so I can definitely check with Merrill Soto. I have a good relationship.
Yeah, Sergeant, check with Chief Barkman. He's very successful out there.
But do they have, they don't have that kind of traffic through Hybelburg, do they?
Route 50 is what they conduct.
Yeah. Redhorn, 50.
They do?
Yeah.
Well, I'll check. We'll get information from Merrill Soto on that, definitely.
I just don't know if they have the tanker traffic we have. I think that's a big concern for our borough, the safety of our residents.
Absolutely.
And property, just our borough in general. I don't want to be something that went destroyed in seconds on national news or something.
You sure that he said that they were?
They're non-odorized, and there's placards. I follow them where they go, they go up to, up there to Rook Station.
Nobles Trunk Road.
And they were, and they were gas or butane or?
I don't know, isobutane or anything like that.
Isobutane, andbutane, propane. And there's another, there's another impurity in there, too. Those are three of the main impurities.
They're flammable items, because I've seen the placard on the side, diamond placard.
Yeah. When you see them coming through this way, most likely they're empty.
They're going this way. This is where I saw them.
When you see them coming through, going towards, they're full.
Right. And they all, a lot of them have Georgia license plates, United States plates. And right on the back of the tanker truck, red letters, right on the round part of the back of the tanker, non-odorized, liquefied gas. So, that's a concern if we have leaks. No one's going to smell it. I don't know if you see it, if it comes out cold enough to make a vapor. But I don't want to be here where there's eight trucks in the middle of my street.
And I agree with you 100%. That's why I've been, you know, we've been looking into this immediately. And because until one leaked, you know, there was, we had a lot of truck traffic, and there were some concerns, but until we had that, actually, that leak, then it kind of alerted everybody that this could be a lot more of a dangerous situation.
Right. I voiced my concern to Cosmas Arcefield about six weeks before the incident, in July, before I went on vacation, because of the amount I saw on Saturday night. It's six or seven o'clock on a Saturday night, and there's eight tankers lined up on Main Street in Harcourt Borough.
I know.
And you said we got pissed with that one night, that there was eight to 10 of them lined up?
I took a picture with my phone when I was sitting at the red light, and I took a picture of them stacked up to Main Street, and...
Are we saying, Mayor, that there's, that this is permitted by state statute? This is permitted?
Well, when I talk to, when I talk to the chief and to Senator Fontana, that this is a state road, you can't stop them from...
But that type of, that type of flammable is acceptable then? You know, going on a state road?
That's whatever. That's what I'm told. That's what I'm told. And that's why Senator Fontana is trying to put something together to identify the problem.
Just a moment, I'm curious.
Address the problem. There was a, a Collier was doing, I think, an inspection.
They were doing an inspection.
In a state, right.
It's just lucky for us. But is there any regulations on how many can be confined to one area? Like, shouldn't there be a spacing on them? I know these drivers may be complacent because it's a day-to-day thing.
That's the chief. The chief's right here.
I mean, keeping that many of them in that small of a space, is there any rules? I know as a worker, they may get, they may last get complacent, and they all bunch up. Maybe there's rules that they have to stay a distance apart. I don't know. Is there?
I'm not aware of any of that.
Because I think that would be a good idea to, you know, at least keep them separated.
I think it'd be a good idea to keep them out of our community.
Well, let's do that and keep them on a highway.
But we, this is a state road down here. We don't have, we just can't, from what I'm told, from the chief, and from even if Fontana's office, it needs to be addressed through legislation. And Senator Fontana, this is near and dear to his heart. He's actually picked this up and run with it, so...
I think anything we can do to make it an annoyance for them to come through our borough would be...
I agree.
To our benefit. Make it so it's not worth it while it's safe, the 10 minutes coming through our borough, and they can stay on the state big highways away from the business district, the residential district, and our borough. That's all I'm asking. And if you go off the Green Tree Echo, Fleet Street, you pass only very few homes on Mansfield. It's mostly commercialized, and there's a lot of space that's not jammed up like we have here. That's our concern.
I got you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for listening.
I don't have anything much more to add to what you're saying, but there's always a problem. You've got, like you say, all the residents down here, people all over the place, and you have this ton of high explosive or ball pool liquids from the medical stoma through. And you endanger the citizens because you can't stop them from going because it's a state road. It's something's wrong, or you haven't balanced it out. But can you do something like saying, no explosives within ten feet of something or other? That would not be...
That's the guy you asked right there, the chief.
Well, yeah. But the thing is, is I hear both of you talking, and you kind of fluff it off.
No, no, nobody's...
I realize you're trying. I realize you're trying.
That's absolutely not true.
I know. Okay.
That's not true.
But it was handled lightly. Let me put it that way.
No, it wasn't. What was handled lightly? You have no idea? See, I disagree with you on that, but go ahead.
Okay. And when he stopped about just limiting the explosives that would nigh them to come through this street, then I hear you saying, they're coming from this direction, going up to Rook Station. Did they come from what, 79?
Collier Township.
State School, Carter. Yeah.
What I'm saying is, is get on 79, what button in the parkway? Down the parkway, get off the Green Tree, they're almost home.
Exactly.
We agree with that, but we cannot prohibit them from driving down our street.
No explosive trucks allowed beyond those points. Hey, you've got a truck, you want to drive down through here, great. But if you're carrying explosives, not through the town. Figure it out. This guy should be able to find all kinds of laws. It's already been tested and everything else.
Again...
Let me go with this one more. Up on my building, they come through our residential area with all sorts of explosive tanks, oxygen, settling, what am I trying to think? What I want is hot explosive. Anyway, trucks come up there, the tanks are sitting there. And I'm thinking, are these trucks legal in a residential neighborhood? Now, I know I have this problem. You guys bet your little, I know you've got connections with those guys up there. But I heard you mention you have a little podcast, something down here. I heard you mention last meeting, I heard your podcast mentioned. But it sounds... I can't, I know I can't stop that business up there. I don't want to stop this, by the way, but for now, my problem is getting them out in some other direction. But maybe somehow, forget about all that, all the tractor drivers come up into my neighborhood. The gases, that's all I'm concerned about. They come up there once, twice a month, maybe three times a month. Is it legal? And if it isn't, you should do something about it. I'm gonna figure it out.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. We'll check later.
Leonard, I will say one thing. Nobody has fluffed this off. Nobody. It's a very serious issue.
I didn't really mean to use that word, okay? I'm sitting here, but I'm listening to this gentleman talking to you. You guys are giving him responses that I'm thinking, you're not talking in terms of driving or... It's the way it's on to me, okay? It's the way it's on to me. And this guy's right. All those trucks going down through here. Well, we're all, we're all meeting in the other room. And I'm sitting there. I'll glance out the window all the time, truck after truck. I know somebody said, was that when trucks were coming through? Well, just that little meeting, a dozen trucks went past, and a lot of the tanker trucks, and I don't know what they're carrying, but they're going that way. You said it was chemicals going to Rook? Then that's what we were seeing. I'm seeing chemicals.
Not all of it's chemicals. You have to know, some of them are chemicals. Some of it's fracking sand, and some of it's fracking water.
Yeah. Are they going that way with cracking water?
Yeah, they go both ways. Because that's where the plant is, right up there. They get it right there, railroad, right there, right across from Mendota.
One night, for 10 days, Leonard, I sat out his partner on, 10 days straight, more. And that's high low, that it's between 55 and 70 trucks, 515 into 845.
It's a shame that you got a poorly in highway going down through here. We got our town right next to it, and, you know, you can't separate, you can't really get it away. I'm, I'm... Putting a little thought through.
All right. Thank you, Leonard. Anyone else? Comments?
Hello. My name is Dan Burns. I am the interim president and executive director of the Historical Society of Carnegie. I am here to announce the recent resignations of co-founder and president Marcelo McGrogan, vice president Bob DeBar, and secretary Joe Harker. Marcelo has not retired, and she is still a part of our organization. However, she has decided to step back from the day-to-day operations of the Historical Society. She has held the position of executive director since the society was founded in 1990. Carnegie has the largest in the area municipal historical society in regards to assets and with the most hours of operation available to guess because of Marcelo McGrogan. The resignations of our vice president and secretary, coincidentally and unfortunately, had to happen at this time also. We are seeking candidates to fill the vacant board positions as well as two outside directors. We also need more volunteers to ensure that the hours of operation are not reduced. Please contact me as soon as possible if you are interested. We must elect the new board members at our next scheduled board meeting on October 2nd at 6:30 in the Carnegie Borough Building caucus room. I would also like to talk about our membership drive. Our goal is to have 200 members by the end of summer, and we are almost there. And we're also going to have an event this Saturday. As a membership, we're going to get together. We're going to meet at the Hustler Building, and we're going to take a field trip to the Walker Ewing House in Collier Township. It is only open about once every two years. We're going to meet, we're going to basically leave the Historical Society at 12:30 and then take a carpool over there. So, if you want to see the Walker Ewing House, this is a rare opportunity to go on Saturday.
What's the date of that, Dan?
This Saturday.
This Saturday. What time?
12:30. I would also like to discuss our plans for the renovation of the Hustler Building. It was built in 1896 by architect Samuel Thornburg McClark, a relative of the founders of Thornburg. And it was built by Dr. Edward Hustler. When it was built, it was one of the best office buildings this town had. And as a historical society, it is our duty and responsibility to make sure that nothing happens to it and that it's restored to its original glory. We have plans to put an elevator in. If it cannot be put inside because of the structural capabilities, then we'll make a way to put it on the outside. But we are going to make use of this building. We have plans for all four stories. The Historical Society is going to use the second and third floor. The third floor is going to be the museum, and the second floor will be our offices, our boardroom, classrooms, geological and research center, and archives. I personally feel that these should be on the second and third floor because if Carnegie ever does flood again, we cannot let what happened to our artifacts happen in 2004. We lost a lot of stuff, and under no circumstances can we let that happen again. These are irreplaceable artifacts. So, you might wonder, well, how are we going to be self-sustaining? How can we afford to do all this? Once we do our $2 to $3 million campaign, and we will do it, we're going to be self-sustaining because every single floor of that organization and building is going to be profitable. Our fourth floor is going to be a replica of what it looked like when it opened in 1896. And it's going to be a mental facility which can be rented out, and it's going to be a tourist attraction and a destination spot. People are going to come from all over because they're going to want to rent that facility for events. When you walk into that building, you're going to feel like you're in 1896. Our museum is going to bring tourists, and we're going to have admissions, and that's going to raise revenue. People are going to come to see our Honuswager Museum. Local people will come. People who used to live in Carnegie are going to come. People who are interested in steel, railroad history, Andrew Carnegie. There's a lot of things in this museum that are going to attract people to Carnegie. Our second floor, people can rent out our boardroom, our classrooms. That as well is going to be profitable. And the most profitable of all is going to be the first floor, which we would have the Star Theater, which would complement the Off the Wall productions really well. And the arts would be a cinema, and then a cafe. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dan. So, you said, could I ask you, you said that Marcela has resigned, but not retired? So, her capacity is, at the moment, is a volunteer in the organization?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have comments this evening? Normally, at this time, we would adjourn, but the council has some other businesses that we have to attend to. So, I am not going to ask for a motion to adjourn. I'm going to ask that council reconvene in the caucus room. Good and welfare? I'm sorry? You have something? Does anyone have good and welfare? I'm sorry, I skipped over that. Sue?
Just one thing. Saturday, September 29th, at 7:00 p.m. in Honuswager Field in Washington Avenue, is going to be the Carlington High School Band Festival.
I'm sorry, what day is September?
September 29th. It's going to be Brentwood High School, Hopewell, North Gate, Union, and Carlington. And there'll be a special performance by the Carlington Alumni Band and the Mini Pon Pons. Adults are $6, students are $3, children under 4 are free, and there's going to be fireworks afterwards also.
Thank you. I wasn't embarrassed, anything?
The only thing that we have going on this Saturday is, well, last Saturday, we had a car cruise that was canceled because of the rain. So, we're rescheduled for this Saturday from 11:00 to 4:00. And hopefully, we'll have about 100 different cars there, maybe more, if it doesn't rain again.
And anyone who's interested in Boys and Girls Club, the benefit tickets can see you.
Yeah, for the last Sunday of the month over at the Alpine Club in South Fayette. They're $60 for a single and $100 for double tickets.
Council sergeant?
I just want to mention, mention...
I just want to mention, mention real quick, Wednesday, Wednesday, I was able to participate in that twice over the last month and a half, and it just was a great event. Yeah, I think that the group grew, achieved from a handful of people to close to a dozen, and then, you know, afterwards, sitting down, breaking bread together, it was, I thought it was a very inspirational program, and, you know, hopefully continues forward into next year. Also wanted to mention that I recently talked to former councilman Bob Chidlow, and he just sends best wishes to all of council, and he said he's very, very proud of Carnegie Park, something that was always near and dear to his heart, and he wanted to let me tell each and every member of this board that he thinks everyone's doing a fantastic job. And finally, tomorrow being September eleventh, there is an event up at Bridgeville Fire Hall, something that they've been hosting for the last six years. I will be representing us there, as I have in the past, and if nobody's ever been there, it's, they do a great job with that, and it's, it's quite a ceremony to attend. Thank you.
Councilor Katina?
Nothing to mention, Mr. President.
You don't have anything you deserve.
Yeah, the only thing I do have, since you, since you said that, is St. Elizabeth Pan Seaton, if you weren't there all over the weekend, they did a wonderful job with their festival, it was, it was very nice, so a big thanks to St. Elizabeth Pan Seaton possibly providing another venue other than the Art, Arts and Heritage Festival for a few days, so thank you, St. Elizabeth Pan Seaton.
Piggybacked, they allowed our Children's Defense Committee to have a booth down there, too. Their Children's Defense Committee raised some money, so that was very nice of them.
Excellent. Okay, then again, I'll ask council to reconvene in the caucus room, and I thank everyone for attending.